Good afternoon, and I'd like to welcome the 12:30 world session of the List of Hills Board of Education. Our first order of business will be to look at the agenda that's been distributed. Do I hear your motion to approve? Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you pose a motion here? Alright, so our format this afternoon will be discussion between Dr. Jenkins and the board members, as well as Dr. Mason, the chief of services. We do ask that all others, hold your comments to the end of the session, we will have time for question and answer. So, while now, do we need to go over to Dr. Jenkins to give us a summary?
Thank you very much. First of all, members of board, let me just express the pleasure that I've had in working with your community. Having spent a couple of days here was very interesting. It became very clear early on in the process, really what y'all want me to do is to find Superman or Superwoman and get them hired, that's what it sounds like, but...
Have you done that yet?
No.
Okay.
We're working on it though. As you know, we conducted both an online survey and the meetings, the open meetings that we had here, and really the purpose for the meetings that I have here was to allow people in the community to express their opinions about a lot of things. When you do a survey, you can get results, but you don't always get detail. You get a lot of comments, and I'll talk some about that today. But we wanted to give the employees, and the parents, and the students, and the community an opportunity to express themselves. The survey itself focused on skills, experience, and personal traits that the new leader will need to be successful in the community here, and... But when you have the open meetings, it allows you to probe a little bit deeper, and respond, and ask questions, and find out really sort of where people are coming from and what they're asking. And I would say to you, you get quantitative data from the survey, but it's not a scientific survey by any means. What it is, is a purpose for us to sort of feel the pulse of the community. And I also would say to you that far fewer people came to the public meetings than we had to respond on the survey. I cannot tell you whether some of the opinions that I'm going to share with you today, that were voiced at these meetings that I held, represent a groundswell for the community. But the one thing I can assure you is that the people who responded in those meetings are very passionate about their school system here. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about that. On October 19th, we came, came to this room, I came to the council, city council chambers, and to your middle school. Two meetings with the general public, one in the morning and one in the evening. One meeting for system and building level administrators, one for public officials, and one for certified and support staff. We usually break them into those kind of groups where people feel free to talk and say what they really think. And we did have a lot of people that say exactly what they thought, so we felt like we were successful with that. We actually ended up with 66 people that attended the meetings. In the... We had the parents in the community, administrators, public officials, employees, and students. We also had board members, which is not on that list, but I met and have talked with each one of the board members. Meeting responses. The first part of this presentation is basically a summary of what was stressed during the public meetings that we had, and what people said. Traits and skills that recurred frequently in those meetings. They talked a lot about strong character. Wanted somebody that was honest, has integrity, that's humble, trustworthy, compassionate. They want somebody who has very strong communication skills, but somebody also that would be a very good listener, and that is open to the opinions of others, but is diplomatic in how they deal with those things. And board members, I have for you, when I get through, I'll give you a copy of everything that's on the screen. Next, traits continued in the recurrent topics. We heard a lot of discussion about that the community wanted a bridge builder. Somebody that was a collaborator, somebody that was able to build rapport and relationships with the community. Somebody that valued being transparent. Somebody that was able to sell ideas and not just tell. We heard the phrase, "We want a seller, not a teller." We heard that a number of times during the day. And someone that would be inclusive. Continuing on traits and skills, under leadership, they wanted a leader that experienced as superintendent. You'll find out a little later in this presentation, when you see the data from the surveys and so forth, not everybody thinks you've got to have a superintendent that has experience. The meetings that we attended, the majority of those thought we did need somebody, but this community is sort of split on that topic. Also, someone who is able to make difficult decisions, and a thick skin to stand by those decisions. Somebody that's proven successful at hiring and managing staff. We saw that frequently. Somebody who's able to maximize student achievement. Somebody who will set high expectations for teachers. Somebody that values and supports teachers. Someone that's skilled at long-range planning. Someone that understands challenges of rezoning, facility development, finances, and a growing enrollment. And then the last one, somebody that understands Vestavia Hills politics. That came up frequently too. Under the idea of an academic leader, we kept hearing, "Somebody that's student-focused, somebody that's willing to provide average students opportunities comparable to what high-achieving students receive." Or somebody that's able to maximize student achievement, and somebody that desires a strong career tech program. Challenges in those meetings recurred frequently. Facilities planning, rezoning, funding for future growth, future grade configuration, and long-range planning. The rest of the presentation is about the survey results. The survey was conducted over a 10-day period of time, and there were four questions that were designed to get at skills, traits, and experience, and then one demographic question. And the results really were very similar overall to what we got from the input meetings, and I find that to be true frequently. And once again, I'd say, please note, this is not a scientific survey, it's a snapshot at that particular time how people feel. Also, you need to be aware that we noted that more than one response from the same IP address existed in the survey. This was done because we know system employees take from work, they take the survey at work where they share an IP address, and because you have more than one stakeholder in most households. We did look at the answers coming from the same IP address, and considered a variety of factors to see if anyone was trying to game the system. It appears that 10 out of 1,063 respondents may have taken the test more than once, including one person who appears to have taken it eight times. All but one of those eight times, that person self-identified themselves as a parent. We did not remove those answers, because we were not totally 100% sure. We know what happened, but you know, if I had to prove it in court, I probably couldn't. But we don't believe that those roughly 30 responses skewed the results of the surveys. Particularly, I would say to you, been doing this four years, we had by far the largest survey returns we've ever had. We're usually in the 400 to 500 range, and yours was 1,063. So you had a lot of responders. As I said, 1,063 took the survey, but not everyone answered every question. Some of them left some questions blank. The parents of Vestavia Hills students accounted for 75.3% of the respondents. That is a large group of respondents that is unusual. Usually the parents are not the largest group that responds, usually it's employees is the largest group that responds. And in this one, employees was 19.4%, students was 1.4%, 15 students. And collectively, the rest of the respondents who chose to answer the question comprised 3.6%. Those are the ones, group includes alumni, residents of Vestavia, and those who were selected. None of the above categories fit them. Also, we understand that many people fit more than one category, but we asked them which category fit them best, and then they identified on that basis. The importance of successful experience. We asked what are the areas in which it would be the most important for the next superintendent to have experience. Overall, the top responses were recruiting, leading a staff that can effectively serve all students. As we go through these slides and talk about this, anything that's rated 4.5 or higher is considered to be extremely important to them. Anything that's between 4 and 4.49 is considered to be very important. But the most are the 4.5s above. So when we look at this, and you can see recruiting and leading staff that can effectively serve all students, communicating effectively with system employees, ensuring student safety and discipline, communicating effectively with the parents and other stakeholders, creating a positive climate for employees, leading long-range planning, and implementing a curriculum with 21st century skills. Now that does not mean from that line on down is not important, but when you look at all respondents, those are the ones that they rated the highest. The others ranked lower, but were very important. Also, this is a compilation of all respondents. How does that compare to what the parents said? Since the parents made up 75% of the respondents, wouldn't you think that this slide would be very similar to the previous slide? And it is. But if you go down and you look, recruiting and leading staff, effectively all the way down to implementing a curriculum with 21st century, those are the ones they rated the What about employees? Employees, not surprisingly, listed the four items that directly impact them and their job, which is a little different. But I would say to you as board members, that's not unusual. Everywhere we go when we do this, employees usually rank these items higher than the other groups. Creating a positive work environment for employees, communicating effectively with them, recruiting and leading a strong staff that serves all children, and ensure student safety and discipline. Also, they gave high scores to budgeting and planning, that were very important. What about graduates, residents, and those who listed none, basically community people? All of the community groups, the top priorities were very similar to the parents. Recruiting a quality staff, communication, and discipline, and safety. And then you go all the way down to leading long-range planning, I think that's the bottom of that group right there. What about students? Student responses. The student group was small, but the results are interesting. They saw experience with school finance as the most important item. That unusual coming from students, thought that was good. Followed by communication, developing a quality staff. Interestingly, the students put safety and discipline further down the list. They still said it was important, but it wasn't as important as some of the other. I guess that's because they're not parents yet, they just really don't. Also on this question, all respondents had the option of choosing "other" as their response and making a comment. 246 people chose to do that. Those comments are part of the board's packet and haven't been edited in any way. I would say to you as board members, we've included that in your packet, just like it was submitted, full letter words and all. So you've got it however it was written. To summarize them, they follow closely with the comments made in the stakeholder meetings. They include things like someone who can withstand political pressure, who stands firm on decisions, and won't play politics. Someone who will make decisions based on what's right for all students, someone who's student-focused. Someone who has proven himself as a leader and a communicator. Someone who has integrity. Someone who is a strong leader, who leads by example and doesn't micromanage. There were numerous comments reflecting an interest in a leader who respects and understands diversity. Someone who will serve all students and understands that the demographics of the community are changing. A number also commented on the need to hire a person who supports specific programs, such as special education, STEM programs, career tech, and the arts. Several also commented that the next superintendent should live in the community. Our attorney has informed us that that is desirable, but you cannot by law mandate There are also several comments about hiring someone with Judeo-Christian values, or someone who is a Christian. Our attorney asked me to advise you, you cannot take what church somebody goes to or their religion in in making your selection of your superintendent. Next, the question referred to degree or certification level of your candidates. The level of education that the next superintendent should have. Clearly, there's not a sense in the community that the position requires a doctorate. 81% believe the incoming superintendent should have a master's degree. Now if you get right down to it, that's the minimum that the state requires for that position. Only 39% felt the position requires a doctorate. And on the issue of doctorate, the largest group was neutral. So I think you have to look at, if you look at the master's degree, you take the 81% and then the neutral 15%, you just about get the majority of the people. If you look at having a doctorate, neutral and agree, pretty much gets you near 94% of the people. A lot of people just didn't want to... And what I gathered from the meetings I had, what I heard most frequently was, "Doctorate preferred, but not mandatory." And that's sort of the message that we got. From the parents, 80% have a master, 17%, three against, and have a doctorate. 36% parents felt that was necessary, 57% were neutral along that line. Employees, they're a little more supportive of requiring a doctorate. 87% master, 7% neutral. If you go down and look at doctorate, 50% think you ought to have a doctorate, 45% Community response, once again, 92% with a master degree, 5% neutral, having a doctorate 36% and 62% neutral. And like I said, the message we came away with pretty clearly was, "It's preferred, but not absolutely necessary." We'll look at that. I think sort of what several people expressed, they didn't want to lose some rising star just because they hadn't finished a doctoral program yet. Look at that. Not a lot different. Next item we looked at was work experience. What kind of experience does someone who's going to be a candidate for the need to bring to the table, as far as their work experience is concerned? Overwhelmingly, respondents believe you should hire a leader with experiences in the administrator. However, that could be a principal or a central office administrator, and not necessarily as a superintendent. And also of note, almost nine of 10 want someone with classroom experience as opposed to someone who's never been a teacher. There are a few school districts in this state, not many, but there are a few, who hire people that are from outside the education arena. I mean, we've had, I know we've had a couple superintendents that I'm familiar with, one was military background, came from the military to be superintendent. Another was, he was the CEO of Russell Mills, and they closed the Mills and the community wanted him to be the superintendent. He had to go through a lot of hoops to get certified, to get his certificate, but he did. And he served as superintendent for about seven or eight years, and is now the mayor of that city, so obviously he must have done well. But most of the communities I go to, they want somebody who's been a teacher, somebody who's been an administrator, it's sort of that attitude. I want somebody who's walked in my shoes, I want them to know what I deal with every If we look at it from all respondents, 90% say they have got to have some kind of administrative experience, whether it's principal or a central office employee. Have classroom instructional experience, 87% yes. Have served as a superintendent, 51% with 41% being neutral. If we look at parents, it's very similar. 89%, 85%, and then 50% served as superintendent elsewhere, 43% neutral. From the employees, 97% have to have administrative experience, 95% classroom experience, and superintendent, 56% felt like they needed to have been superintendent somewhere else. I heard the phrase several times the day I spent with all the public meetings. "I don't want somebody here to come, to come here and train to be a superintendent. I want somebody who's been there, done that, and comes to our community." So we heard that frequently too. Community, assistant principal, principal experience, 90%. 95% have classroom instructional. 67% of the community resident felt like they needed to have served as superintendent somewhere else before they came here. Students, administration, classroom experience, 33% served elsewhere. Next, we gave 10, we talked about challenges that the new person that's come in is going to face, and we'd ask them to pick out three. What three are the most important out of this list of 10? Because all 10 of them are important. So which three are the most important? If you look at it from the perspective of the all responses, planning for your facilities' needs, ensuring students are prepared for work in college, and maintaining and raising student achievement. Those were the three. Those were three things we heard frequently in the meetings that we had also. If you look at it from the parent's standpoint, same thing. Pick the same three. If you look at it from employees, same three. Just the percentages are a little bit different. They did choose, the one thing, they did choose facility planning as the top one, which was a little different. If we look at community, selected the same three. If we look at students, students chose the same three. They were the only group, though, that put raising or maintaining achievement as the most chosen answer. Their percentage was higher. Comments under that section, again, the respondents had the option to add comments under the heading of "other" on the question. That 121 people responded on that. Many of the comments were along the same lines as the comments from the previous question. However, the issues of ensuring Vestavia offers quality teaching and hires quality teachers were stressed by commenters in this question. They also had numerous mentions of the need to be sure that you have schools aligned in the most effective way. Such as grades, what grades are going to be in the elementary schools, grades in the middle school, grades in the high school. So there was, there was some concern in those comments expressed about how you organize I told Susan I was convinced that when you saw this, there was nothing there that was going to surprise you. Because it's basically what I heard for two days. And I'm sure they've shared those thoughts with you. Any questions at all?
Anything surprise you?
No. Very similar. Particularly with what's been going on in the community the last year or so. People get emotional. We have some people that we encountered that are, have very strong feelings about, and like I said, I'm giving you the comments, so you'll see some of what we're talking about there. And they didn't hesitate to write them down and express them. But that's part of what, you know, I mean, bottom line, when this whole thing comes down, people sitting around this table are going to make that decision. When we come back after we finish our search, and we bring you those five names, it is our intention to bring you five people that are capable of doing this job and doing it well. But it's your job then to go through those five, and which one is really the best match for Vestavia Hills. That's the bottom line. Because once we bring you those names, we'll take a real step back. I don't want anybody in the community to think that we picked your superintendent. If you're not happy with any of them, we'll bring you some more. Dr. Mason and I have already talked, we're starting to make phone calls. There'll be a lot of people when all this, the brochure goes out to everybody and so forth, there'll be a lot of people who will respond to that. And there'll be a lot of phone calls. I've already gotten phone calls from people asking questions about the search. So I've tried to this point to... So, uh, I've tried to this point to answer their questions, but you're going to make some decisions, I think, the, to finish out the brochure so that we can get that thing in the, in the mail and take care of that part of it. But, uh, I predict there will be large interest in what you have here. I will be bluntly honest with the people that I talk with because they asked me a lot of questions in my interact. Because what we're basically asking these people to do, sell their house, take their family and move to a new community. And as, you know, as I told several of them the other day in the groups that we were in, don't be surprised, some of these people who are going to apply have already been to your community. And there will be a number more who will be here over the next month. They will come in, they will spend a day, they'll check into a hotel here. They'll go visit places, they'll drive around, look at your schools, uh, you know. That's a big step when you're talking about moving your family from where you are to come to a new community. Uh, I also will sell this school district as an opportunity of unbelievable proportions. The right person come in here and get busy, roll their sleeves up. There's no doubt, you can be right up there wherever you want to be, no doubt. But it's going to, uh, probably the next 60 days are extremely important in carrying this process out, getting it to fruition and getting a person hired and under contract to come. I will, unless I'm instructed differently, I will say to the people, uh, that we bring you the five names, that the date to report to work is negotiable with the board. You'll work that out with them based on where they are and what they're doing and, you know, and how good a fit you think that, that particular person, because if you can narrow it to one person, say that's who we want, then you can work those kinds of things out with them, uh, to get them here. Yes, sir.
Are there any other high-profile searches going on?
Not that I'm aware of right now. I, as a school boards association, we're not doing any. There, we've got a couple of attorneys in the state who have started doing those and so forth. And of course then we hear about it, but right now I'm not aware of any. But that don't mean there's not any, but not any that are really out there.
You know, we said, you said we had, uh, double what you see in survey responses. But is the breakdown between the ratio of parents to total and teachers to total, is that similar to what you see in the responses? No, we've got to hire.
Usually the, the employees from within the system, that includes certified, non-certified, so forth. Uh, that's usually the highest number. Usually parents come in second or community people come in second. Uh, here it's just, uh, a little different. But you know, if you really stop and think about those groups and you look, not a lot of difference in the responses. That there, you know, when we started working with the, uh, survey results, wasn't a lot of difference than what I heard the two days I spent here.
And with the board's comments?
Yeah, I felt like. I felt like walking away from the board that y'all are pretty much on the same page, you know what you're looking for. I, I, I caution you once again, once you get down to, if you narrow it to two people, so, go visit where they work now. You learn a lot from those kinds of visits when you go to the place that they are presently employed to find out what kind of job they're doing. And, uh, you will, uh, you know, most people who serve as superintendent, there are people in the community who will say wonderful things and there are people in the community who won't. You, you need to investigate those kinds of things as much as you can and find out, you know, if somebody wanted me to hire their brother-in-law as the football coach and I didn't, they may not be happy with me. You know, I mean, you got to, you know, put it in perspective of those kinds of things. But, uh, you, you, you visit places like the Chamber of Commerce, you find out what kind of interaction that superintendents have in the community, with the business community, with the leaders in your community and, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, board members, you can talk to board members. The, the, the problem you're going to run into is when you get this down to one or two of who you really are interested in, majority of the time, what you're going to find is wherever they are now, don't want them to leave. So they're not going to be real eager about helping you lure that person to come here. So, but that's a good sign if you, if you have that issue to deal with.
On the topic of not requiring a doctorate for our system or what you know about us, do you think that's reasonable?
What I will say to candidates that call me is that a doctorate is preferred, but it is not absolutely necessary. If you think that you can do this job and you're prepared to do this job and you want to come to this community, by all means, fill out your application so that we can take a look at it. I'd rather, I'd rather have 50 applications with 20 we wouldn't even consider as opposed to having 20 and then we're having to narrow that down. So, uh, I, I mean, every search we do, there's a certain number of people that apply for every job we have. And they're not going to get recommended because we know too much about those, but they still apply. So, uh, what I'm looking for is that pool of real quality candidates who want to come here and do this job and are capable of doing this job. Uh, as I told some of the groups the other day, going from 50 to 20 is not a problem. The problem's going from 20 to five. That's when you get, you know, because, and you have to do a lot of research and background checks and we'll do a lot of that. And I advise you once again, once you get those five, check them again. You never know, there may be something that we missed, our attorneys missed or whatever. Particular out of state, we, uh, we know enough people within the state. When they list their references, a lot of times when they list those references, have you ever called anybody to check a reference that was on your list that said bad things about? They put them on there for a reason. What you want is to know somebody that works there that's not on their reference list that you've, you know, we know a lot of people in this state between the folks that are working on this that we can call and find out a lot. Out of state's a little more difficult to check, but we really pursue that aggressively. And we'll have out of state candidates, you can count on that.
And I think we've talked about this before, but we're not just going to rely on, um, the candidates that choose to apply on their own. We're also really working back channels and other ways to find and maybe.
We, we've already started making phone calls, but they will have to make application to be considered legally. And what, what I'm saying to the people I'm talking with is you need to get online and get this application started because it's not something you just sit down and do in an hour. I mean, it takes a while to, and then that's, that's part of why I, I stressed to you earlier about the importance of having that person, you know, if they're outside the community, to spend a full day here, go through the schools, meet teachers, meet administrators, have a social event sometime in the avenue where people from the community could come in, meet them, talk with them, stand and talk with them before you do your formal interview. Uh, because they've invested a lot of time. If they get to the final five, they've, they've made an investment. And you just, uh, some of the school districts, they want to do like three one afternoon and two the next afternoon. That's really not fair to your candidates. Other questions?
How many have, um, started the process of applying since you opened this up on the 20th?
I haven't, I haven't even looked.
Oh, I thought you were going to start it because you could tell.
I, I won't start that till they have this meeting because there's some things that haven't been decided yet that have to go on the brochure. We've already published some stuff, but there's a brochure. Now, have I talked to people already? Yes, definitely. So, you know, but as far as the formal process is started, uh, it'll probably go up online tomorrow. Yes, sir.
It appears that I'm going to call general resident response was relatively low. When we met with you, we pointed out that over 70, approximately 70% of our residents do not have school-aged children in our system. Do you know that 70% of the empty nesters, retirees, grandparents, do you know they were reached out to also in the survey?
There were, there were some in the group that did that. Uh, I don't know the exact percentage point, but for the ones we had, they were, um, a significant percentage of those did not have children in the school system. That's one of the vantage things about responding to that. Yes, sir.
I would say that, um, the whole process, putting surveys on our website and also this thing, the voice around story that outlined the process and called attention to the survey. So, uh, it was out there, people, uh, just didn't get it.
When you read the, um, surveys that were sent in, it was very obvious for some of them, when you read them, they didn't have children in the school system. They made that very clear. But they also taxpayers, they have very, very strong interest and they'll tell you that too. We, we got that message.
And I think it's important too, that although we have a timeline out there, we're not set in stone on that timeline, whether candidate.
The deadline for applications is unless you change it prior to.
But the actual hire and having a body here, that's.
Once the deadline is closed and the applications are narrowed, everything from that point forward is up to you. My advice to you is from the time the five people are selected, the quicker you interview them, the better. Sometimes, and I, and I appreciate the curious question earlier, I'm not aware of another search, but you know, Saturday, Florida had a football coach. Today they don't. So, I mean, you know, that, that can change and folks be going after the same folks that you are interested in. So, uh, I'm just saying, we always advise, don't drag that thing out too long. Because when I place a phone call the night before I come to bring you the five, I will call each one of those five people and I will say to them, tomorrow I'm presenting this to the Vestavia City Board. You still want the job. You still committed to coming to this community. You still committed to staying for a very long time. Is there anybody you hadn't told yet, primarily if it's a superintendent, that their board doesn't know yet? My advice to you is go find them right now because tomorrow this becomes public information. Once I hand that to you, it is public information. It will be in the news media, I can assure you. So, most of them, I would say to you, 85, 90% of the folks, when I make that phone call, have already done that and everybody's on the page, everybody knows. Occasionally I run into one or two, that's a red flag to me. You know, if you hadn't told yet, why? And, you know, that usually leads to what is the relationship between you and your board? And, and I would say to you, one of the things that we value greatly is protecting the identity of the people that apply. The only names that'll be released will be the five finalists. I know of two superintendents in the last year that have lost their job because they applied for a job. One of the school systems, we didn't do the search, but they published the name of every candidate in the paper. It costs people their jobs when you do those kinds of things. So that's sort of around. Anything else? Anything you want me to do?
What else do you need before, before you can finish up your work?
I just, I've, I've got to call Susan tonight and give her the information she talked to you about. Other than that, that's pretty much, uh, it. All of you know how to get in touch with me if you need me. Dr. Mason and I talk frequently, so, uh, we'll keep them well informed as we get through the process.
Do you need a ration board in terms of what's supposed to provide itself?
That's correct. Usually what most board to sit at tables say, gives the base salary, final salary negotiated with the final candidate based on, uh, experience and successful work, something along that line. This is what I just put up there. And there's also a copy in there of all.
Terry, I think we've got one other, one other question back here.
Yes.
I have a quick question. Is, will the board be the interview committee?
Yes. Structurally it's set up.
When you say base, you mean minimum.
Yes.
Place your base plus.
No, yes, I'm sorry. A lot.
And what, what some, what some school districts do is they take what they play in the present superintendent and make that the base, but also express, you know, that's the bottom line. You're willing to pay more than that.
So that salary begin at whatever and then you can commit your.
And, and I would say do that based on what you would do next year.
So in the 195, 19 range?
I think that there's certain, I mean, I think during our revenue funding base, that there maybe one community that shouldn't pay more than, and then the rest probably should be more than.
Of course, you know, you've got to think about the experience and that.
Right. Was her, was her salary a lump sum for, for the previous salary? Was that included car allowance and everything else? So you're talking salary and then per.
Well, yeah, which, yeah.
Which is what this would be.
To be consistent, yeah, this would all be that same thing. We wouldn't get into any of that additional parts of the package. It's just going to be the salary. So.
Just as one of the people who are here, it might be good to call out the salaries for, if those are closest to you.
Yeah, Homewood City is 192.4, Hoover is 195, Mountain Brook, 210.
Yeah, Alabaster down there, that's 193.
Yeah, 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 Trestville was a, Trestville paid more than us, Alabaster paid more than us.
Do you want to go higher than that?
I think somewhere between Hoover and Mountain Brook is a reasonable amount.
So that's between 195 and 210. You want to go 190, I said 195 is starting.
If you advertise that, are you talented at that?
I would think we probably are. What do you think, Dr. James?
I mean, the scary thing is, you don't want candidate to apply just based on that number. I mean, if that's their driving force for coming here, we got a problem. But then the other side of that coin is, if you're really going to attract the top people, and you come in here at 135, they're not going to apply.
What's the, I mean, if you kind of think about surrounding states and stuff, is, are these salaries commensurate or somewhat commensurate with maybe what you see in a Georgia or Tennessee sometimes?
I think they're very similar. The only one I would say to you that's probably out of line a little bit there with them would be, there's one in there that's 255, and that's Jefferson.
Right. If you look at their student population too.
Yeah, there's some of the metro Atlanta system, the Gwinnett Counties and those kind of places, that probably would be comparable to the 255. But, I mean, those are huge school districts, and you know, we're talking 7,000 students here, they're probably talking 60, 70,000.
Right.
I don't think, I don't know how many.
I mean, the way that, Jerry, I don't know about you, the way that we approach it at work is we want to pay enough to take money off the table without it being ridiculous. Right. So you don't, you want that not to be something you have to negotiate around or whatever. So you want to find that kind of number that, you know, it's not going to discourage anybody, but it's also not going to be the sole motivator, and then they need to want to come here, but take that kind of component off the table. So I don't really want to invite a lot of questions, it's like, why is it this compared to this community, or why is it this compared to this community?
And I would say that, as Terry said, he's already been contacted, what types of candidates, they'll continue. And so if somebody wants to know more than whatever you said, they'll apply. So just, what you put on the brochure is not the only thing that they will...
I think it's important to have that phrase on there, "Final salary negotiated based on credentials and successful, years of successful experience." And I like the word "successful" in there, because some people have years of experience that are not successful.
Bart, so you want to land at, at 190? Is that safe?
I'm not real, I'm not comfortable putting a high number out just because Hoover or Homewood or somebody has that number. I mean, again, with the, it's open for discussion, based on everything that we're saying, but that speaks a lot for itself. I mean, you may not, you may not get a, you may not get an experience, either principal or superintendent or administrator that's close to that range already from where they're coming. And you, and you also, you've just vaulted it up there. And if we have to turn around and face an attorney saying, "Well, you've advertised that, plus more on top of it," then we're, we're over 200 grand for somebody that may not be at that level yet.
But you want to hire them?
Yeah. I'm not saying nobody's buying right now, but see what they bring to the table.
Oh, no, the way I think about it, like, when you think about our community expectations, if they're, whatever the ranking is, when they start dragging their finger from the top of that list down, nobody wants to go far, right, until it gets us. And so I think if you're going to have those kind of, I think if you're going to have those kind of academic expectations, then, you know, I think that maybe we need to think about what are, you know, do we want to bargain superintendent, or what? And again, we're not really talking end of the day, the spread is not, the great value superintendent.
It's also going to matter where they're coming from.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why we're talking, I mean, like, you know, the spread we're talking about's not huge, right? So somewhere in that range. I might lose a lot of sleep over that, but I think that, I want to, I think to some degree, that states your kind of commitment to who, the kind of caliber of person we're wanting to attract.
Yeah, I think if someone's making 150 right now, but we think our job's a 190 job, they should make 190. If we shouldn't, hold it against them if they're making 150 today. I presume that's a good idea.
Prime example, superintendent at Piedmont. He'd been superintendent there 14 years, and he made something in the range of what you just said. He ended up being selected as the new superintendent of Huntsville. His salary was well over 200, and that's the reason he applied for it. He could have stayed at Piedmont till he retired. I mean, they loved him in that community. But also in that same search, we ended up, the national superintendent of the year was one of the candidates in that. And based on what they, she had to take a cut in salary. So, I mean, there's all kind of, the fact that you're reaching out as far as you're reaching, it's a lot different than if you're just doing a search that's basically Alabama. You know, you're reaching out to places that, and some of these people in these large city locations make substantial amounts of money. But we also have to come back to, what is a fit for Vestavia? Just because I've been superintendent of a district that has 105,000 students does not mean I'm going to be a good fit for Vestavia Hills. So, you know, we have to look at all those kind of ramifications.
I don't think money should be an issue. I'm not saying give it away, but if Homewood, Hoover, and Mountain Brook are 190, 195, and 210, we certainly need to post a number in that range if we think those are our local benchmarks.
But I would make sure you word it so you leave yourself flexibility.
Right. I'm just saying, a member might be 190, and all those other fancy words that you've used would cause...
That's why we publish where our target comes, right? So then it might be a little more, it might be a little less, but that's kind of the target.
Yeah, if it comes in here and there's a person that has never been a superintendent, I mean, you pretty much got where you're going to be. But if they've come in here and they've got all kind of credentials and been very successful and highly recruited, then it's going to cost you a little more to sign that kind of person.
I would be thrilled if that was the kind of person I were going to get.
You'd like to have that problem. I'd enjoy that.
Okay, so can we land on 190? The brochure. And I think with the other points we've covered, they needed for...
I will call Susan and give that to her.
Okay, any other questions or comments? This meeting stands adjourned.